Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fault order roll call, starting on my right.
Counselperson Josh Erne.
Counselperson Brent Byer.
Mayor Jimmy John Kane. Counselperson Craig Anderson.
Counselperson Jeremiah Logan.
We're looking for approval of tonight's agenda. Any additions from staff?
What you see should be what you get. That's it for tonight.
Anything up here?
Move to approve.
Send a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That carries. Approval of council meeting minutes. Regular meeting of April fourteenth, twenty twenty.
I'll make a motion approve.
There's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. That carries. Now, we're looking for a motion in the minutes of the special meeting. Where of April fourteenth, twenty twenty. Move to approve. We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That carries. Then, lastly, the minutes of special meeting. Of April fourteenth, twenty twenty, of the tax debate.
I'll make a motion approve.
There's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That carries. That takes us on to finance and budget. If it becomes payable with the additional listings there. I got a question. Just for my own information. I've seen this one, and we've had it before, from the fire department for Haley's Comfort System for electrical work and stuff.
They put in a, it was like an electrical heater that was put in.
Okay. So, I guess my question is, this is where I was questioning, why do we have to go off, do we have to go off the business of a certain number? Or do we at least look for local contractors first before we go outside the area for stuff like this, electrical and stuff like that? Or, I mean, just for my own curiosity, this time, especially now in this day and age, where they're just beating their hands against the wall trying to make money.
Yeah, I'll find out what they, if they, if they did or whatever, because is it for one of the rules?
I'm not sure.
Just wondering, you know, we can keep as much local rate now as we can and help everybody else.
Fair question.
Alright, that's the only questions I got. Anybody else got any questions? If not, we'll look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That carries. That takes us to the twenty twenty budget first quarter review. Carla?
Alright, so if you guys want to go ahead and open that up, there's a lot of different graphs in here, just to kind of look at things different ways, dependent on how you want to see it. Since this is kind of our first time through it, you can let me know what you think too. Um, so we're going to look at the first slide here with the revenue of the first quarter. This is based on our total budgets for twenty twenty. Obviously, there's a lot of the budget that has not come in for the revenue based on the taxes and such that are coming in. So, right now, we're at seven point two percent of our total revenue budget. And looking at the next slide of it is just kind of in a pie graph, just give you another view of it. Then, on the third slide, it has the revenue details, which then in the bar column, I did a quarterly split, just didn't evenly split across all four quarters, which we obviously know that it's not going to be even per the quarters, but it gives you kind of an idea of what we're doing. And right now, we do know that the tax payments that we normally get to fund the budget are going to be delayed, since they're being delayed coming into the county. Um, then, like I said, there's just, there's another, with the revenue budgets, just looking at breaking out for the library, the economic development, our department, civic center, um, the enterprise funds, just to kind of see where we're at and what's going on. And then, there, then this is the one where the revenue is broken out for each of those individual items as well, on a per-quarter basis. Then, if we move on to expense, we can see that we are at thirteen point eight nine percent of our annual budget. Right now, things on the budget, nothing is out of the ordinary or seems out of whack for this portion of the quarter. And then, just another pie graph of another way to look at where we're at for each of the expenses and the categories. And then, again, a breakout of specifics within the details of the analysis and the quarterly split evenly amongst each quarter. Now, one thing that I will note is, there is a negative amount in the fire and emergency services. That is based on that state farm grant that we got for those speed signs. And we had the money come in, but we've not expensed anything out yet on it. So, that's why you're seeing that. And then, the one Q expense summary that just is showing it broke out with the budget evenly for the first quarter. And then, there's just another slide, additional details and lots of things for you to see and just kind of look and compare depending on how you'd like to see it. Um, then I did add in what we had for the cash reserves at the end of twenty nineteen, just so you can kind of see where everything was at there and where the city is sitting for all of those things. So, those are the funds that get moved over from year to year and accumulate until we need to use them. There's a couple of slides of that as well. There, I know there's a lot of information in there and a lot to kind of take in and different ways to look at it, but I didn't know if anybody has any questions or concerns on what they're seeing.
Any questions for Carla? Anything you've noticed in there, or you want an answer to, or you like the way she's presented it?
I said a question on the taxes coming in. Um, if there's, is it going to be a delayed payment for all of it? Or are you going to get increments of, like, the people that pay on time and the people that delay it?
The county has not specified that yet, and I don't know how much, you know, if they will do part of it on time, but at this point, they've said it's going to be delayed. But as you all know, if you have it in our, in your, like, for your mortgage, already built into that, then it has to be on time, so I don't know if they have it.
Okay.
And then, the governor on Friday said he and the legislature so far committed to all the LGA that we've been promised, so. And that's supposed to be timely, but I don't think those payments come in until July anyway, so.
Okay.
Are the first one.
Any, any other questions for Carla, or anything you'd like to see presented differently, or? Well, cool, alright. Anything else, Carla, for us?
Not right now.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
That'll take us to motions of general business. First item of the motions of general business tonight is the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one CIP project. City advertised bids for the CIP project. Uh, this time, we use advertised bids using the best value. Bids were received from A1 Excavating in Bloomington, Wisconsin, and Elcor Construction, Rochester, Minnesota. Public Works Committee along with City Engineer Obernolte, City Administrator Schimmel, and Public Works Director Haley evaluate the bids. They use six categories to determine the best value. Experience, past performance, experience in construction projects, experience significant personal history resumes, project approach, overall project schedule, project bid amounts. The first five bullet points were evaluated, the second, first, and then eventually by each of the five members, and then tallied and averaged together. The sixth bullet point, bid amount cost, was then divided by the final average technical score, which provided the adjusted bid score. The adjusted bid scores, best value of the bidders, were then compared for award, and bid recommendation was for Elcor Construction. Jenna, you got, do you want to add something before I ask for council action?
I, I can go over some more, if anyone's interested in how we looked at everything and how things were slated in for. Otherwise, if there are any questions, you can, you can go ahead and throw.
Okay, okay.
Ask about the estimate versus bid.
About the what?
Ask about the estimate versus bid, because that's good news.
It came in under estimate, right?
That's right. It came in quite a lot under estimate, did you? Or, for the actual bid price, Jenna?
Yes, I will share my opinion with you guys here, and, um, our estimated price was just over four million. And Elcor's bid was just over three point five million. And that includes the two alternates of the sewer lining and caving, the parking lot part. So, um...
So, we still came in just below or half million under, under the bid, huh? Let's blow it.
Yes.
Let's get the other parking lot done.
We, we did see some better pricing in pipes than we've been seeing lately, and we are, we are still seeing some higher prices in just two minutes. Um, I've got to make the assumption that has to be, because this is a multi-year project, and even though the barrel price are still low right now, they can't make sure to leave that low for the next few years.
Well, they probably, they probably bid that off last year's oil thug since it's volatile right now.
Yeah, so, um, but they were coming in right with, well, just under, well, we were predicting from last year for the bid purchases. Most other, I, uh, we ran a lot with where we were last year, or with some of that pipe, had it under, so that is positive for this project.
How did, uh, Jenna and I and Josh, how did you like working on a big project that way? Find it interesting?
Yeah, it was kind of a, a lot of paperwork to go through for A1, but Elcor had it kind of laid out pretty easy for us, so.
Are you seeing them use this type of bid more and more all the time down there?
There's some cities that use this all the time on any projects that are, you know, above like half a million or even above a quarter of a million. Um, those, but, um, as talked a couple of those cities, I don't see it all across the state.
Okay.
But, um, there definitely are some that like the ability to apply, um, this other information and make them more educated, I guess, on sewer after.
Alright. Is there anybody on the table that had a question for Jenna?
When's the estimated start date, Jenna?
I haven't. So, one of the things that was included in the report was we asked for the gravel. And so, they're looking at starting right after Memorial Day. Um, basically, that first year, right before this beginning, that you're, so, we'll have to send out contracts. Um, we will have a previous construction meeting, um, like, live virtually. Um, and we are also working on releasing information out to the public, um, about the contracts and contracts and just more information about how construction's going to go. So, um, working with city staff on getting upaged on the website that's created just this project, so that we can get information out there.
That'll be our virtual version of a neighborhood open house, similar to what we've had in the past, so.
Alright, any other questions for Jenna? Thanks for all the information. Uh, so, council action requested on this would be to approve resolution twenty twenty dash, a resolution receiving bids and awarding contract to Elcor Construction for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one CIP project. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Do we have a second? And Craig, any questions or other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That carries. That takes us on to our next one, which is Flats fifty-five development, a public utility project. The city advertised for bids for the Flats fifty-five public utility project, which includes water main, sanitary sewer, and sanitary manholes. The city received five bids. City Engineer Obernolte had tabulated the bids and is recommending that Elcor Construction be awarded a contract with a little bid of sixty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars. Jenna, anything you want to add to this? How much under did this one come in?
Twenty.
I'll show you. So, our estimate was at eighty-three thousand. Um, and that was an agreed estimate, right, from the developer? Um, when they were talking, negotiating, negotiating, everything. Um, Elcor did come in, twenty thousand under. Um, and everything was, that was required was included in their bid, so there's, um, so, if I'm still bid wise, it's known that Elcor is a reputable contractor, it is our mandate to work on.
Excellent. Any questions for Jenna on this one? Alright. Hearing no more questions, Jenna. We're going to ask to approve resolution twenty twenty dash, a resolution receiving bids and awarding contract to Elcor Construction for the twenty twenty Flats fifty-five utility project. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That carries. Thank you for all that, Jenna. Next item, under public works, street maintenance. City has advertised and solicited bids for the twenty twenty chip seal and crack filling projects. Attached is a listing of streets to be completed, which is on another page. The following bids were received, chip seal, Pearson Brothers Incorporated, buck twenty square yard, that's fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four. Far, is that farmer?
Farmer.
Farmer.
Farmer asphalt, two sixty-five square yard, a hundred thirty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars. Crack fill is bargain incorporated, two fifty-nine a pound, farmer asphalt, two ninety-seven a pound, and Elcor Construction at five ninety-five a pound. Funds designated for this project are included in the twenty twenty budget. Looks like they, uh, came in under what you projected, too, Sean, or?
Some of the estimate, or?
I didn't, no, I, I have no idea. We just solicit each time and go to the same crews and, and get prices from them, so.
Oh, no, not here. Our, our proposed budget, what we thought.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we, yeah, yep. It's budgeted, it's in there, so.
Alright, good. Council action requests award chip sealing contract with a little bit of Pearson Brothers Incorporated. Do we have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That carries. Award crack filling contract, a little bit of bargain incorporated. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions and discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That also carries. That'll take us to the last one, item is Public Works Department again, the part-time seasonal workers. Public Works Director Haley has recommended the following hires through the personnel committee. Alan Major, Hugh Butler, Cole Rader, Shane Updike. How do you see him?
Chai.
Chai.
Chai, Spector, and Kyle Lipton. Rader and Hugh Butler will be split position on one of the large molders. Council action requests to approve the hires as submitted. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Oh, second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That also carries. That's going to take us out of there to the mayor's staff consulting boards. On the mayor's report tonight, we'd like to send the city, we'd like to send their sympathies to the families of Caitlin Griffin, Marvyn Twax, Janice Johnson, Bill Javerman. Don't forget, your last chance to sign up for community garden is now, correct? Planting gardens looking towards the future. Thank you to our library staff for all the work in getting the book pickup started again. It's greatly appreciated. As we can see from the letter to the editor's circle star, it's very appreciated, and I've got a couple of calls myself about it, so thanks a lot for getting that going again. And once again, here we are, two weeks later, and we're still doing our part to keep everybody safe, so I'd like to thank the community for that again. It's, uh, good to see that everybody's spirits are pretty good yet, holding up, get this nice weather, you want to get out and get about, and kind of shelter in place all winter, waiting for the nice weather, but... It looks like they could be coming in the end. We'll find out here this week from our governor, but there's a lot of great things that have been going on. The drive-in movie down there we seen just the other night, huge turnout. They talked about all the people that turned away. We've got our libraries doing our book pickup again. Some of the folks I've talked to around town, the, the pickup and carryout from our local restaurants is running very well. They seem to be, business seems to be working for them. A lot of neighbors helping out neighbors, getting work done for them, helping them do stuff. Just keep a little bit of social distancing, we can still have a good time. We can be out talking, walking, visiting with the neighbors. So, I appreciate all we're doing for it, and hopefully, we're nearing end of it. So, thanks again, folks. That'll take us to your city administrator's report.
Uh, reports in your packet. Hopefully, some good news. As of now, we're trying to plan to keep the citywide cleanup in place. Sean and I met with Tori Keefe, so what we think we've worked out is an arrangement to keep the schedule like we've advertised. But this year, our staff, or I mean, in past years, our staff or Tori's staff would help citizens unload. Well, Tori said the only way he can really get it to work properly is if each citizen unloads their own items. So, he'll still have signage dumpsters, drop areas, and then we'll try to see how we limit the vehicles going in. But then, each, um, vehicle, we'll have to have people on there, in them, in the vehicle themselves, to give them a helping hand, or give themselves a helping hand. And then, we'll monitor how many can be in at a time and go there, so hopefully, that's good news. Then, um, the chamber is dealing with what we should do here with the summer activities. Right now, it looks like the dance and the arts in the park is going to have to fall off the radar, uh, from what their feedback has been. Um, they've talked about ideas for fireworks and parade, but there again, depending on what orders the governor has, depending on what gathering situations are in place, that may have to fall by the wayside or get delayed as well. Obviously, there's still a lot of excitement from the chamber board to want to do some things. I think our community wants to do some things, but we're going to be at the mercy of, of what we see. And like you said, mayor, that's going to be these next couple of weeks that we'll probably get a better feel for what will be able to happen. We are monitoring the other communities. Right now, it's mixed. Um, you're seeing more in the news of the ones that are canceling everything, so we may have to follow that. But, uh, we'll keep a, keep a optimistic eye out for a little while yet. Um, we are still planning to try to get a softball season into place for league. There might be some guidelines there that we'll have to watch, but we're at least looking into that. And then, of course, the big one that you all may have to weigh in on is the swimming pool. We're at least making our plans to try to open up and be available, because obviously, it'll be a citizen's choice if you want to go to the pool or not. But, that probably, um, is going to have to come as a directive from the State Department of Health, which does the inspections of our pools, and is going to have to comment one way or the other if they feel that, uh, those restrictions can be lifted and we can open up. Or no, this particular season, uh, we may have to, um, put that by the wayside as well. So, we'll keep you posted on that. Uh, they're obviously well aware of it. We've been in touch or gotten in contact with, uh, one of the local area inspectors from the Department of Health, and it sounds like some of the surrounding cities are trying to see if they can stay in place or stay open, so we'll just have to wait and see. And then, ultimately, it's going to be up to you folks, um, if you get citizen feedback one way or the other as well, so.
I see they delayed the Kentucky Derby till September, though. Um, and someone, lessons, we're not going to even sign up until May for them, or?
Right now, it's scheduled for May twenty-first, February.
May twenty-first, yeah. Alright, any questions for administrator, or?
The pool, we're going to hold off getting it ready, and we'll put extra guys up there in the end to make it happen quicker, so we don't spend a bunch of money and time getting it ready and then it is open. So, if we have to, we'll just put extra guys there at the last minute to get it opened up on time.
Okay. Any questions for Bill? Alright, thank you, Bill. Finance Director Carla?
I just have one quick thing. Um, we had the first request for a hazardous tree to be assessed on a property. Um, so, we had kind of met and talked about putting a policy in place for that, where, um, they will have to sign a petition and waiver and agreement by the property owner. Um, and just trying to figure out what the interest rate should be on that. For most things, we use the prime plus one. And so, um, basically, we will use the prime rate on twelve thirty-one of the prior year, um, plus one, so... And then, anything that is under twenty-five hundred dollars, the taxpayer could be assessed for up to three years. Anything over twenty-five hundred dollars, then it can be assessed for five years.
And, and that's if, if they want our participation to help. They're still free to get their own quote and just pay for it outright, so.
So, this was someone that brought it up on their own property, is what they're saying?
We had a complaint, and so, we did the, had the third party come down, and there's two trees that need to be removed. Um, and so, she's been notified, and she first thought she would do it on her own, but then came back and asked if we would just have the trees dumped, removed, and then...
So, who, um, who did we send out to make the decision whether it wasn't, weren't we supposed to have a, a race go off?
Jay Meyer.
We had...
A three-person board.
From Meyer.
Okay, so they did look at it, and I just wanted, I don't want to get, I get worried that we're going to get in this spot where all of a sudden, neighbors can just call and try to start the process when it's not even relevant, you know, I mean, I just, a little worried that it's...
So, what happens, the neighbor calls, um, Sean and Scott go look, and they say, "Yeah, we think it's probably dead," and then we call that third party in. So, and we've got, um, another letter just went out this last weekend, um, and that property owner has three trees. Um, there was four evaluated, three are hazardous to, um, neighbor's property or city property, so.
And, and it's more along the lines of, like, ones that are hanging over people's fences and stuff like that, he's not deeming an issue. It's the ones that are hanging over houses and, you know, more safety issue.
Yeah, I would hope that they would err on the side of keeping the tree, if possible, you know.
Any other questions? Do you need a motion approval, or?
I don't think so. This is just kind of, just a piece of information in addition that I just wanted to share with you, that, or I think everything was already in place, but has some trees.
Alright, thank you, Carla. Public Works Director Sean?
Uh, reports in there. The one thing I wanted to talk about, parks, we put the parks together this week. Uh, the water is on, bathrooms are usable. We have not unlocked them as of yet, uh, so that's a decision that'll have to be made also, is if we want to unlock parks. I know it's all over the boards with different towns and what they're doing.
I know, I mean, if you look at Minneapolis, and they shut down everything for the whole year, with the whole summer.
What we know more may for.
They look Michigan to five hundred thousand bucks for more in the front yard.
I just, I have, I don't know what to think with the bathrooms. I mean, a lot of people out there, and I don't, I know if I had to go, I'd be in a tree. I don't want other people doing that. But, you know, and I don't think people are necessarily going to conquer it. I think you just have to make sure that we had proper soap and whatever in there to encourage hand washing.
We did talk about maybe just keeping the porta-potties there, but then, we felt that with the running water and the soap, it's probably a little more safer having the bathrooms open, but we would put signage up that's, uh, you know, at risk or on risk, yeah, so. Most people probably will not use them, but then there's going to be those few that need to go in.
Right. And we do do a regular maintenance, um, it's just not every hour on the hour, every day, but, so they will be attended to. But it'll be a citizen's choice or discretion, is how we're thinking or would like to do it, so.
You can always shut it down if they start, if they decide that's a place they wanna congregate. Can't afford them to hang out all the time because we don't allow them to have that.
We'll do whatever is what you guys agree to. It's just been so all over the board, what everyone's doing, that I really don't care.
Well, there can be an awful lot of people on these trails and stuff, walking through the woods and things like that.
It can't be open till after May fourth anyway, right? I'm pretty sure that's one of the.
I don't know that I would want even mess with anything until May fourth anymore, just to see what the governor says.
That's just guidance is all I want, whatever you guys wanna do.
We could, we need to make an ordinance that if you wear your mask and you're loading your car.
Then you can go pee in public.
I just can't shake my head at these people. You can't be that, you know.
One other thing was we, uh, got pricing and getting inspection on the water tower, which will be the pedestal tower out northwest. Uh, and skip that.
I got a feeling it's not gonna be cheap.
Well, it's, it's, uh, it's forty-six hundred was the bid. Which it's through S E H. In the past, we used to bounce around and use different, get bids on that. Well, a few years ago, we quit doing that because you're getting some guy that's been in the thing for two years doing it this time, someone, so we wanted to get consistency, and if S E H is our engineer, we hire them to do it. Uh, and that's the going rate, what they're doing anyway, so it's not like it's.
Do we do that annually?
No, every five years, we do an inspection on each tower.
Every five, huh?
So, or no, I shouldn't. Seven years in the pumps, five years in the tower, yeah. So everything's on a, scheduled per years is what, when we have them come pull them, inspect them, we try and stagger them so the expenses. Uh, and then we do need to pressure wash that tower out there, so we're in the process of getting prices to be able to pressure wash. And, uh, they'll do that before they inspect it to help with the inspection.
As far as the bathrooms, I guess, we're gonna wait till we find out.
Yeah, I don't think we, I don't think we should be in any position to do anything if there's a stay-at-home order on. After that gets lifted, then I think it's time for us to step in and start making decisions.
Well, parks are open and ready to go the second it's lifted or done, so.
Yeah, I mean, technically, we're not, parks are open, uh, right now. We're not gonna yell at anybody for being in the park. But, you know, if we're not unlocking bathrooms, it's not like it's so much on our own as that we're pushing it or anything.
The only thing is, we got one of them that's, has water to it, that's an exterior one with no doors or nothing on it. That is just the open pits, but it has running water to it from the wash their hands, which is better than having the open pits there with no running water. So.
Yeah, they'd be using that anyhow.
Mm-hmm. And all honesty, the bathrooms, all of them are push lever. You can hit them with your elbow or something. If you want, you don't even have to touch anything, really.
All right, let's go that way. We'll see what he says next. Ready, Karen?
It's me.
You guys still okay?
Yep, it was good.
Yep.
I thought I had something on there, I'm asking. I don't know. I'll remember if you're sorry.
All right, I'm sure you'll see me.
Uh, City Engineer Jenna, you got anything you wanna report?
Nothing else. Um, just working on getting those bids and, uh, also getting ready for construction care, so already talking to Elcor and all that on, uh.
All right. Anybody got any questions for Jenna? All right, thank you. Uh, no library director, no fire chief. That takes us to Committee Commission of Morgue Reports. Chamber of Commerce. To the E D H R eight.
I missed the last one, so I don't know.
We did a Zoom, didn't we?
Yes.
Virtual meeting, mm-hmm.
All right, Finance?
Nothing.
Nothing? Library?
Nothing.
Park Board?
Nothing.
Personnel?
Nothing.
Fire away, Nick.
I don't think so.
All right, planning zoning?
I'll give you an X.
Public safety, March and April calls for service. Jason, you got anything?
I'll just pound on that. Yeah, I gave you the March and April from, uh, twenty twenty and twenty nineteen.
Oh, okay.
Just to kinda give you guys an idea of, if you look at April especially, you'll see a big drop off in the first traffic stops, a lot of self-initiated calls are down.
Is that 'cause everybody's staying home?
Traffic's way down, there's a lot less cars and deputies were not targeting the minor violations as much. Just to kind of limit the amount of contact we had. And just so you know, there's, the April's way down, but there's also a handful of days around town, four, it's not been a month yet, but, um, but just, uh, like, uh, two, beginning this week, we're, uh, revamping traffic again. We're gonna start doing actually a little extra traffic enforcement now. We're gonna bring some guys that are working, probably not control people who come up and do some traffic saturation now, since, uh, apparently the last state report said crashes can stay wide enough, so. We're gonna try to mitigate that down here. Uh, other than that, um, just the one thing I wanted to mention, that we, we have been getting a lot of complaints and questions about A T V laws in town here, people driving A T Vs on the, uh, six streets, so. We're addressing those, we've been contacting a few people driving them, um, the last few days, it's, it's not very much.
What, what's, what are they doing? I mean, what's happening?
Uh, some people, some people calling, questioning whether they're allowed to be on the street at all, which they are. Uh, and then other complaints that they're not pushing, pushing a lot. I mean, they're supposed to drive them all the way to the curb. This is for, I mean, this is for a Ford, you know, a Ford will A T V, it's supposed to be on part of the right as possible. You're supposed to drive slower than normal traffic. They're not street legal as some people describe them. They are just somehow, if you drill the common street, street legal would mean they'd be registered like, uh, with a license plate like a motorcycle would be, they can drive at the speed limit. They should not be driving thirty miles per hour down the road. So we've had, I think, mostly like complaints have been north, northeast and northwest. I think there's a one complaint that's still out there that I don't think we've been able to speak to the violators about, drive on Sixth Street northeast.
Well, you've been able to speak to most of them.
Uh, yeah, the one that was northwest, I think we got that one handled, but, uh, northeast one, uh, kinda, I don't believe we've ever had, we've got contact with it. Two of them have been different times today, and maybe they'll grab on Sixth Street northeast, but we didn't talk to them. Other than that, unless you got a question or concerns for me, that's all I have.
Anything for Jason? Well, thanks, Jason. Public Works?
Uh, nothing to add. We're just, we've had to do the C I P stuff, and that was it.
Ready?
No report?
Roll call.
No report?
School one eighty?
Nothing.
Transit Advisory Committee?
They're gonna try to meet virtually in May, or, um, mid-May.
Okay, no communications. Hold the mic. Again, go here, hold the mic. Okay, hold the mic. We got one motion left to make.
Craig?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? We're adjourned.